And I've got some additional information that really is just fresh for this afternoon. So I hadn't actually had a chance to talk to any of you about about this. We're not now anticipating, well, the issue is is that it's a notice public hearing. So we have to notice it 10 days ahead of when it, when the date that it's going to happen. So it's a little bit different than just putting something on the agenda. So we have to pre-plan a little bit in terms of the timing of it. But the consultant that we have onboard has now told us that he's not going to have information to us until the middle of next week, at which point John and I will sit down and we'll probably meet with, meet with the consultant and then also meet with the applicant and see, you know, where this, see kind of where we're at and where we can, where we can go with this. The, so we're not going to be able to meet the, the meeting on the 20th is the bottom line of that. I know I've also had discussions with some council members and I think also we've had discussions at the dais about the potential of doing a workshop onsite during daylight hours prior to the, to the hearing. And of course, since we're now in the winter, or not winter, but we're, we're in the dark time of the year, we're really not going to be able to do that, I think, immediately prior to a 7:30 council meeting. So we, what I'm thinking is that if we're going to do a workshop, we would probably have to do it on a Saturday and then maybe do the hearing the following Monday night, which kind of leads into the second issue the mayor and I talked about. And, you know, Clark, you may want to take the lead on this, but there's a, would, a proposal to move your December meeting to December 11th from December 4th and do your reorganization that, then. And I think, Clark, if you want to speak to the reason for that.
Yeah. Reason's a funny one. The Christmas tree lighting ceremony is on the 7th. And if we reorganize, the sitting mayor, which happens to be me, wouldn't be able to officiate it. And that's something that I really wanted to do.
Oh.
And, you know, mainly, mainly, you know, I mean, it's like, you know, two-minute thing, but mainly for the grandkids, you know?
Yeah.
It's kind of a, a cool thing for them that, you know?
As long as you wear a Santa hat, I don't have any problem.
Might do that, but.
Dye your beard a little more.
But the thing is, logistically, we'd have to do that for probably the next three to four years because.
Same problem comes up.
It's the same problem until it kind of works its way out.
Right.
So who did it last year? I can't remember the, the officiating.
They did.
Okay, so it just, this year because of the calendar?
Because of the calendar.
You would have skipped it this.
It's a calendar thing. And Terry, I guess I'd probably defer to you since you're going to be the upcoming mayor. I mean, if you guys are, if you're amenable to.
Changing the date, I have no problem with changing the date.
Okay.
Or you hosting the, or officiating at the.
Okay.
Doing the ho, ho, hos.
That wouldn't sound the same if you said, "I'm the former mayor." So it has to be in real time.
Yeah, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be right.
Say, "Former who?"
Yeah, by the way, mayor, former mayor wanted to do this. Last, last time I had the opportunity, it rained.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so the last time I did, it was actually in.
So you're, rained out, huh?
Yeah, it rained out. I'm not sure if it.
Well, I remember that, yeah. Yeah, it was pretty hard rain.
So if it rains this time, then, you know, I'm the good luck.
You want a rain check, huh?
Call me the rainmaker.
If it rains this time, we know what you're going to be doing until the drought's over.
So then if we did that, would there be a meeting on the 11th and then the 18th? Would there be back-to-back meetings in December?
Um, no.
Because we have one on.
Well, here, here's the further complication is that the first meeting of January would, would have been January 1st. Obviously, we're not going to meet on January 1st, so.
It's on my calendar.
Well.
It's New Year's Day.
I mean, I suppose if you want to, but January 15th would be the, the next meeting. And then it turns out that January has five Thursdays. So we would only have one meeting in January. So I, I would think, given the calendar of things that we have to do and the fact that reorganization meetings are usually very light in terms of agenda items, that we would then have a meeting on the 11th, a meeting on the 18th, and then come back in January with January 15th. And then February, we'd get back to our, our normal schedule.
So no meeting on the 4th, then?
No meeting on the 4th.
That's, no, that's fine because it's like right after Thanksgiving and it gives us a little more time.
Right.
Prepare.
So in terms of the 7,000 appeal, I think we're probably going to need a special meeting. And so what I was, what I was thinking of is that if we do the workshop, we do a Saturday workshop, and then the following Monday night would be the actual appeal, whenever we can work that, that in. And I think the first realistic period of time would be Saturday, the 6th for the workshop, December 6th, Monday, December 8th for the, for the actual appeal.
You mean, uh?
The week before is Thanksgiving week.
Oh, okay, a special meeting for the appeal.
Special meeting, yeah. With just that item.
Okay.
For a workshop?
No.
Or no, for the appeal?
For the appeal. The workshop would be on Saturday.
The 6th.
The, the idea would be that the consultant would be there, the applicant would be there. It'd be a notice meeting, people could show up if they want to. And then the consultant would be able to kind of walk, you know, I mean, literally walk through the building and kind of see what, what the, the different options that they're going to suggest. I mean, I, I think there's a combination of different options, you know, well, I don't know, I had that all in my head what that was for the hours committee. But anyway, the workshop would, we would go through the consultant's report and be able to do it onsite. And then you'd be able to kind of absorb that information and ask questions and whatever dialogue you needed to do. And then Monday night would be the actual appeal. And again, the consultant would be here and the applicant and, and then render your decision.
Did you say Monday night or Thursday?
Yeah, Monday night.
So that wouldn't be the, it wouldn't be the 11th, you're saying? We would have a special meeting on like?
No, I think it's the 8th.
The 8th?
Yeah.
Because our council meetings are now on.
But don't, don't, don't put those in black ink yet because I, until I meet with the consultant the middle of next week, I'm not going to be really sure where we're at. So I'm just throwing out kind of conceptually, a Saturday workshop, a Monday appeal in that week. I'm thinking it's kind of what might work.
And then we would meet again on the 11th as a regular council meeting?
Then that'd be a reorganization meeting.
Reorganization.
So we usually keep that a very light agenda. And then on the.
It's a party.
Okay.
More of a party, yeah. More, more, more festive.
Right.
And then the 18th would be, we'd get back to business.
And on the 8th, would we have anything else on the agenda?
No. No, my intention would be that would just be the, the, the appeal only. So you could be here five minutes or five hours, I mean, depending on how it goes.
Depends on Ray. I'm just kidding. Okay. Is that doable for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm sure that's going to be fine for me.
Okay.
Well, as long as we still have the calendars out, and I'm not quite sure, um, since our days aren't written in stone yet, you also have the rescheduling the housing element workshop.
Yeah, and I was going to suggest that we, we move it to, we were, we were going to have it on November 10th, that we move it to November 17th, which is the following Monday, if that works for everyone.
We're getting you back to your Monday.
I know.
Monday meetings.
And.
Can you do it? Clark? You're checking.
Um, let me ask city attorney, if we're showing due diligence on it, do we? I mean, it's not a, a have-to thing, is it?
Well, you, you know, I, I think it's, it shows good faith if you're showing that you're moving ahead to try to get something to HCD within the timeframe that the statute is indicating we're supposed to have a certified housing element. So certainly, the sooner that you're able to hold the workshop, and if you then feel comfortable scheduling, you know, a, a meeting at which you would then actually consider the, the draft housing element, that would be in our interest to do. You know, certainly, we are working up against the deadline. We don't want to go past that or much past that because the further we go, the, the more difficult it becomes. And so I think as long as you're showing that we're moving ahead, that's good. It's just how comfortable you're going to feel after the workshop to now go ahead and schedule it to do something that can be, that can then be transmitted to HCD.
If I can.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I follow up with a question after you, Clark? Got it? So in regards to the deadline, if we, if we make the deadline, then we get an additional year of not having to submit our, our numbers? Additional four years?
Four years. It's a, it's a four and eight.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, it's a.
When's the deadline?
It's January, it's January 31st to have the adopted, um, housing element. So it, and it's 60 days from the time that we submit it to the state. The state's got 60 days to review it. So, you know, we're already, we're, we're pushing the dates.
All right, let, let's do it then.
So the 17th?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine.
And then I think Lori and Terry and I, John, need to get back together in terms of how we're going to schedule that day.
Okay.
How we're going to schedule it?
Well, the.
Structure.
Structure.
Okay, but it's going to be at 7:30 on the.
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I used the wrong term. How, how we're going to structure the agenda for that.
At night.
Okay.
Okay.
I think I've confused you enough now.
Okay, that brings us to Subcommittee reports, Economic Development Subcommittee. I think we had a long one Monday night, right?
Yeah, well, aside from that, I mean, everyone knows we all met there. And we're going to meet, I think, is it next Tuesday to, at the Economic Development Subcommittee? And we'll be compiling our notes and looking at, you know.
Health and Safety Subcommittee.
Recommendations.
I don't think you met on this.
Oh, I just wanted to wait, one more thing on Economic Development. We also had a meeting on October 21st and we met with Sierra Club, Anne Schneider, and talked, she talked about the Coal Cities Program. And we kind of discussed whether that would be something we would want to proceed with or, or whether our Open Space and Ecology Committee sort of already does that type of work. Just wanted to point that out.
Health and Safety Subcommittee?
Um, we're going to be meeting.
17th.
On the 17th.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. There is something I wanted to bring up, I guess. In Clay's staff report, that I was taken aback when I found it, a fence was approved and built and it never came to the council. You know, while I understand the implications or, you know, the reason behind it, I was surprised that it never came to the council.
What, what are you talking about? When what was built?
A little gate in the park.
I think I mentioned it in one of my reports that it was going to be built.
Um.
Sure.
I mean.
I did.
But.
Yeah, you might, you might have missed one of those meetings.
Let me, let me make my point that anything that's done in the park through the years has been a very sensitive subject, especially when it comes to fences and stuff like that. There's always been an agreement, anything that goes through that or any Subcommittee comes to full council for approval. It doesn't just get done by a Subcommittee. Otherwise, why do we have a full council? And so that, in the future, you know, and I've already talked with staff about this, like, how the hell did this happen? You know, that, that something gets, you know, approved, a Subcommittee does a recommendation, and they don't approve it. They approve their Subcommittee recommendation. That'd be like Ray and I saying, "Okay, well, this looks good. Let's approve the scavenger contract" or something. You know what I mean? Even though it's, it's maybe menial, but it's, you know, we've gone through a meeting just on having a tree planted there, you know? So, and, and fences and stuff like that have always been pretty sensitive in the community. And like I said, I, well, I understand the, the nature of it, you know? I don't disagree with, you know, what was done. It's just the methodology of how it was done that, you know, we should come to the council, so.
Okay. So I understand that. And what about with, you know, one of the other things we approved, which I don't think has been done yet, is the improvements to the tot lot? I don't know if you've been, you're aware. I, I not mentioned that too, that they're going to put on, reinstall some broken spring riders and do some ADA compliance upgrades to the.
I don't know.
Play structure.
Repairs.
Is that something that you think the full council would need to?
Is it repairs or?
Repairs.
Yeah, if it's repairs, no, I mean, repairs are different, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's not, I mean, it's, it's, and then the tot lot has not been nearly as sensitive as the community park, so. And, and I'll, I'll do the maya culpa with regards to the community park. I mean, that was, I think, my staff and myself just being too eager to get, get something done. And we didn't feel like it was changing the form or function of the park, of the park. But that notwithstanding, I totally understand what the mayor is bringing up and, and I agree that that has been kind of the understanding historically. And so that was, that was really my miss on that one. The, the tot lot, I think, is more of a, of a repair and, and, I mean, it'll be some different, different, I guess, struct, or different, I don't know.
Spring riders.
Spring riders and stuff. But it, it's not going to be a different location or anything that's going to change the, the way the park, the way that tot lot functions.
Yeah, because there are a lot of people that, you know, walk in the park and then all of a sudden they have to open a gate, you know? So we, we've got different folks that, that park is serving. And so, you know, we have to kind of talk about that at least, you know, and say we address it. So anyway, I know it's water under the bridge now, but we're going to run that up for anything in the future because, you know, otherwise we might find, next we're putting a gate around the tot lot or, you know, the play structure at the park. Well, you know, they're running all over the place and then it's like, well, that was a whole.
Yeah, I mean, that was one of the considerations and the gate was actually the, the solution, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. Okay. Facility Subcommittee, Ray, that's you and I and.
Um, we had a whole lot of issues on our agenda and some of which have been already discussed, like the library consideration. There are a couple of things I just want to mention, let you know that we're working on them. You know, because we haven't got to a recommendation stage, but we are working on doing a better job of safety lighting at Lagoon Way and Sierra Point Parkway. We are looking at Halla Do City Hall Solar and Electrical Vehicle Charging Stations. We are looking at the, a follow-up to what the Health and Safety Committee did, namely the, the problem of restrooms or bathrooms at the tot lot, especially when the pool closes for two months. So we need to, you know, come up with some, something physical rather than we tried to use existing facilities. And if that's not going to work, then we've got to get a facility, certainly when the pool is closed.
Mm-hmm.
Because then there would be no place for, on the weekends, for, you know, kids to go to the bathroom. So we're going to make a proposal on that.
Okay.
And then another thing we talked about, which was important, is that it turns out that there was, in fact, as some of us have been saying, a bike way adjacent to Tunnel Road, and it was a part of a use permit agreement with Southern Pacific, actually. And Randy actually found the map on which it's located. And there's also a, a use permit that says that Sierra Point was supposed to extend that bike path. So we got some historical basis for going to work on dealing with the bike path issue on tunnel, which we know is a safety problem. So those are the kind of things we're working on. Right?
Okay.
Okay.
You know, in regards to the, the, the library locations, you know, evaluating those, who are you guys with that, looking at the, the properties that we own? And so can you provide any, any additional insight to that? You know, where are you with the evaluation of those properties?
I don't, I don't think we can.
You're saying you need to.
Delve into that right now.
Okay. All right.
We are looking.
The next council, maybe, meeting.
And we know what the library people want. And so we know, then we know there are various options of where that could fit. And that's what we're looking at, then we'll make an evaluation and make a recommendation eventually.
Okay, so you'll, you'll present, you know, not just one.
No, no, no.
Okay. Variety of, of location options.
That's, that's our intent anyway.
Okay.
Question, um, just made me think of it because it's kind of related to the library issue is, I, I thought I saw on Facebook something by Michael Barnes posted about this skate park site and how that, there was some pipe easement underneath the existing skate park site, which makes it now problematic to put a new skate park on that same site. And there might need to be some.
No.
Changing. Can, can somebody clarify?
No, they.
What that?
We were looking at a variety of possible sites.
Okay.
One of which was in the back of the community park, not, you know, where the restrooms are. And then there's the picketing tables and then.
Right, I understood that easement issue.
Rustic area, then going up the hill there.
But I had thought, I'd seen something about an issue at the existing.
Water main problem had to do with that site in the community.
Okay, that was the only water main site issue?
Not, not the current site.
Okay.
And that's the reason that site was taken.
I understand that.
Exercitation because you, you can't build anything permanent over San Francisco water pipe. They got the easement.
Okay, then what I read was.
Misleading.
An, and, and misstatement. Because it made it sound like it was, that there was a problem at the existing site.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
So Lori and I attended the farmer's market, that Hawk Subcommittee meeting a couple of days ago, talked with Jerry. So he is going to close for the winter months, the Sunday farmer's market.
Is that going to only be in the winter? I thought that was going to be just a going forward.
I think he's going to reevaluate it.
Yeah.
In the spring. But it, it has not been producing very well for the vendors.
Yeah, the Thursday market has been much better for them.
Yes.
So we suggested, you know, really reaching out to the businesses in town because that's probably why the Thursday market is producing more sales.
Yeah, so he's going to propose changing the, the time for the winter from 2:30 to 6:30?
Mm-hmm.
So.
I think that already started.
That already started? Okay.
And then we talked about also, you know, potentially considering an alternate site closer to Bay Shore to look into whether we might be able to use that lot next to Bank of America to see if it would increase foot traffic, attract more people from Bay Shore and working at the village. So we suggested that they contact Bank of America and explore that.
You mean, put the farmer's market there?
Mm-hmm. On the dirt.
Yeah, you know, just, you know.
Just to look at options to see if, like, changing the location.
Yeah, I mean, you, you don't, you don't want the farmer's market to go away completely. So, you know, no, it, it sounds like he's very happy, though, with Thursday in the park. So as long as, I'm sure that is a, is a positive for him and his vendors, you know, he'll probably stay there.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, we want to be flexible for him. And then Ray and I had a finance meeting dealing with OPEB and, you know, looking at choosing an investment vehicle to deal with the future healthcare obligations. So that'll come before the council, probably at the next meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
And then Ray and I also had a Baylands Subcommittee meeting and we're currently drafting a letter for the mayor, you know, dealing with San Francisco's desire to, to move the, the train station. And so, yeah.
And Terry and I had a liaison meeting about the housing element, you know, in anticipation and preparation for the workshop. And we recommended at that, or we're, we're, we talked about recommending at that meeting, deleting the reference to the secondary dwelling units at Landmark to be included in the housing element draft. So that's something, just as a heads up, that we would like to discuss when we have our workshop.
Uh, one, there was one follow-up to the Baylands that Cliff and I are serving on. And that has to do with, with the white paper, dealing with the process of dealing with the Baylands EIR and planning and so forth. And that was brought to the Planning Commission. And there were a lot of questions from the Planning Commissioners regarding, you know, what's the position of the council and how do they understand all this and blah, blah, and so forth. And so we were thinking that maybe it might be useful, since Cliff and I had been very much a part of, you know, creating this white paper document, that might be useful for us to have a conversation with the Planning Commission. But we wouldn't do that without the council approval, especially since we're not the liaison committee with the Planning Commission. So I guess we're, we're asking first, do you think that's a good idea? And if you do, especially Terry and Lori, would you, you know, give permission for that? Or Clark, what do you think?
I, I think I would defer to legal on that.
Yeah.
You know, I'd like to hear from legal counsel on that about, because it sounds to me like they're wanting some direction and.
No, I mean, that's the point. That's exactly what we would tell them, that they, they're not going to get from us. We're going to talk about the process.
It's certainly not improper or unusual to have a joint session between city councils and planning commissions when there's a project of this magnitude in which the council, when you can, you know, have sort of a joint discussion, if council wants to give some direction or not give direction to the Planning Commission about it, it's certainly well within your discretion to do that. So there's nothing, nothing wrong with that and it's done routinely.
One of the things that I think would be useful to talk about, and we've been talking for some time about, you know, is there a way for us to sort of, you know, telegraph to the commission what some of our preferences are and so forth? And the advice that we've received from legal counsel is no. That the way the law is set up, the, the Planning Commission has to make a separate recommendation, you know, based on their own public hearing and analysis. And, you know, they can't expect us to tell them, you know, and they shouldn't, and it's not legally appropriate for us to tell them, you know, what to do. And so I think that's one of the things that we would like to convey, at least that's my understanding of our many meetings with, of course, there was David Condon and Margaret Sohegi, who's our special counsel on that, that. And we did, you know, say, you know, can we sort of work together on this? No, that there's got to be a separate process, there's got to be a two-step process. The Planning Commission has to have its public hearings, have its analysis, make its recommendation, you know, before the, the council lays down. It's my understanding.
And, and that's true. I mean, I, I don't, I don't disagree with, with, with that. But again, it's, in my experience at least, that it's not unusual if there is something that is of interest to the community that at a joint workshop with the council and a commission, the council can give some idea of what it's collectively thinking. Doesn't mean that the Planning Commission has to follow that or that it's, you know, it, it has to do that. But there's nothing wrong with giving, you know, some overall, I mean, I mean, there's no sense in, in, I mean, seriously, there's no sense in, if there's something the council just adamantly didn't want, do you really want your Planning Commission to go out and, and explore that? That doesn't seem like a wise use of anybody's time. So I think there's, you know, there's a, there's a, you know, a fine line in there, but they're going to make their own independent judgment. But I think the council can give sort of overarching direction if there's a particular concern or something that you really don't want to see happen.
Okay, so I have, I have a different thought then, hearing what you, because your advice is different than David's and Margaret's.
Yeah, I know.
So we need, I think we need a preliminary session with you.
Okay.
To, to get all this sorted out. Because that's different advice.
That's what I was going to say, too, then.
So maybe we should. You'll agendize this, Clark, and talk about this and give us a, you know, and give a clear sense from, from our new. You know, what, what is appropriate to do and what he would feel.
What about this, Ray?
I don't know how to deal with it, I'll leave that up to you and city manager and city attorney. But I think we need to talk about this because that's, that's different advice.
In the Subcommittee, yeah, we've been, you know, we dealt with, with, well, we worked with David and the consultants in drafting the white paper and then eventually came to the council. So I, I, I think it is probably more appropriate to have a, a Subcommittee meeting to.
Do that, too.
You know, address your, you know, the information that's coming from Michael. But I, I have a feeling that once we sort it out, it'll be very similar to what David had, had recommended.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, I'm not, I, I'm, I guess I have the feeling, I'm not saying anything really much differently. It's a matter of degree. And again, I don't know the context in which David and Margaret would have given the advice. So I would need to talk with Margaret and, and make sure that she and I are on the same page here. But again, I'm, I'm just talking from my experience that, that Planning Commissions and City Councils, you know, met jointly on issues and, and the commission sometimes was looking for not, you must do this, but some kind of, of, for lack of a better word, direction. Not unusual, in my experience.
Okay, so that's interesting. So I think you're probably right, Cliff, that we probably should, you know, have a Subcommittee meeting first and then agendize it for the whole council. Because I still hear you saying something quite different than what I heard David and Margaret say.
Well, what I, what I think is, is, you know, Michael's right, is that he should get with Margaret and, and discuss that, too, and make sure that you guys are on the same page and, and the same context of what it, what it is.
Exactly.
Yeah, and, and then the Subcommittee meeting and at that point, you know.
And we come back and all talk.
What are, yeah, what do we, agendize it or, I, I don't know if this could be a closed session item or, or, you know, how, however you feel it would work, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. All right, any other things?
So I just was curious to hear from Cliff about the meeting in Millbrae with the China, about the China Trade Office.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry about that. So myself and Clay, we attended the, the.
Rain Show?
China SF, um, um, meeting that was hosted by the City of Millbrae. And so China SF is a private, public organization that I guess is getting direction from Mayor's Office. What they do is they have, they have offices in, in Beijing.
You say the Mayor's Office?
Uh, Mayor of San Francisco.
Okay.
Right, so they have an office in Beijing, one in Shanghai and some others, fairly large Chinese city. And so they're, you know, so China, I mean, so San Francisco has been courting Chinese investment, Chinese develop, you know, developers to come to San Francisco, businesses to come to San Francisco. And so, but there are some businesses that San Francisco is not interested or feel is appropriate for them that might provide opportunity for other cities, say, in, in the Bay Area, San Mateo County. Millbrae, you know, is interested in, in attracting Chinese investment. And so they're looking to see if other cities want to partner with them to have a consultant work within the China SF umbrella to potentially bring Chinese investment to our individual cities. So Clay had suggested that the City of Millbrae kind of put in writing what they would like to see from this person and how it would work. You know, questions, of course, arises, you know, if you, you're all sharing in the cost of this consultant and you're working out of an office that is being directed by the San Francisco Mayor's Office, you know, who has, you know, where's the loyalty, right? And, and then if you're all sharing this person, how, you know, how do you divvy up the access? So it's.
Who gets the train?
Yeah, I think it has obstacles personally, but, you know.
Possibilities, complications.
Yeah, so we'll see. You know, I think you always have to keep your options open. You want to diversify your, your economic portfolio and, and, you know, why shouldn't the city do the same? So there's that. But then I also have another thing is that, and I've sent Clark a draft letter. I had met with members of the community in regards to the quiet, the fly quiet procedure that comes over the, the southern part of our town, heading east. So usually we get a lot of airplane traffic that's heading west and that's the port departure. So I've written a letter, I, I, I feel that, based upon some data that I've analyzed, that the pilots who are making these departures can do a better job. They're not obligated to do a better job, but they can do a better job because there's another flight procedure that comes off the same runway, makes a right turn, but they make a sharper right turn. And all of, well, I'm saying all of, but most of the, the departures from the shoreline, which uses the same runway, don't affect us in a negative way. But a lot of the quiet, you know, it's a name for, you know, because it causes more aggravation than the shoreline. The quiet procedures, you know, do, because they, they, they take a wider turn and thus fly over our town. However, with the net, with the new next-gen flight procedures, they're supposed to implement this new procedure called the, called the NITE. And that should eliminate the problem if the flights were flown using GPS navigation. And that's, you know, shouldn't it be a problem? And that's supposed to be implemented in the middle of November. So it's like, okay, why am I doing this letter? Because I told the citizens that I would. And just in case this doesn't, this new flight procedure doesn't get implemented when they say it's going to, then, you know, at least we have something. So hopefully, the mayor will sign it and we'll send it off to the organization that represents all of the pilots and then they will then, or, yeah, represents the pilots and airlines and then hopefully that will get to the appropriate people.
So how does this technology called the NITE minimize noise?
So right now, so for the quiet flight procedure in the shoreline, the pilots, once they leave the runway, they determine how sharp of a turn they make to eventually go to where they need to go. Then eventually, as they're, as they're ascending, they get picked up by the FAA, TRACON, which is up in, near Sacramento. And then they guide them to where they need to go. With the RNAV, which is the next-gen system, the, the flights for these, for this procedure will be run by GPS system. And so the pilot will, will put in the coordinates and that plane will then fly this direct route. There won't be the preference of the pilot to make the turn. Now, of course, the pilot always has the option to, if he or she feels that it's a safety issue, to make the appropriate turn. Because, you know, conditions are always changing. Sometimes it's calm outside and sometimes it's windy outside. And so you, you don't want to put, you know, people in, in danger and, and, you know, and have, and handcuff the pilot to not make the, a call that, that they feel is, is most appropriate. So I'm hoping to get that to the mayor tomorrow and, and then get it off.
So in theory, hopefully, we're not under that GPS preferred route that is loud.
So.
Because if you're under it, you're going to be under it.
So, no, for this one, this one should, if, if flown the correct way, will not fly over any residential area. But this isn't, this is the, these are the flights that you've been seeing going east. All right, this isn't the flights that are going west. And so the flights that are going west are supposed to fly up the shoreline all the way to Candlestick. It's called the stick procedure. And it's supposed to make a left turn going west, out by Candlestick. And then come down, from what I can tell, based on these maps, down the spine of San Bruno Mountain. But hopefully, all at a much higher elevation than what you see, you know, today.
It's been the same problem for years and it was called turn left later, which they've never done. The only, the only airlines that's really complying, I think, is Virgin American, but the, the biggest offenders are Southwest and United.
Well, all, all, actually, all of those flights that make that turn, they're, they're directed by TRACON. So it's, but if a plane gets up to a certain elevation and, and it's appropriate, the, many times, the air traffic controller will have the pilot turn because it's safe to do so. So it's kind of a, you know, you're in a no-win situation. They can turn when it's safe to do so and they turn when they feel that it's, you know, an issue of safety. You know, with another plane coming in, in the same area as that SFO flight.
From Oakland.
That's it.
Okay, all right, written communications. I know we've had one from former mayor on regards to water and sewer. And we are going to be sending.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working with the Facility Subcommittee to draft a letter of reply to former Mayor Johnson. That's almost complete.
Clay, would you mind forwarding that letter? I, I, I didn't get it. I know that apparently she's, that all the council members.
It was an email.
Yeah.
Oh, the email from her?
Yeah, if you could forward the email.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what's your city account.
Okay, any other written communications?
Nope.
See, we're about forty-two minutes past our departure time. Item D, we've already done, communications number two, I mean, done, all right.
So, closing in honor.
Oh, yeah.
Memory.
Yeah, I know.
Memory.
Close in memory of Donna Allen, longtime Brisbane resident, just recently passed. So, meaning to adjourn, that was the night.